All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 27th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. We have an executive session that's going to begin at 6:15. And it being 6:15, we're going to take a motion to enter into executive session, followed by a roll call, and then we will go offline and be back on or about 7:00 p.m. So with that, can I have a motion for executive session, please?
Motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Police Chief Michael Grace.
Second.
Any further discussion? The executive session minutes, too, does that need to be part of the?
We can do that.
Okay, okay. All right, great. So we do need to go through a roll call. We'll just go right down the line.
Mark, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. We'll see everyone back here on or about 7:00 p.m. All right, good evening, everyone. We're back. It's 7:05 from executive session. We're going to continue with our agenda. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance first, and then we're going to move right into the Police Chief's Contract as we just left executive session talking about that, and then go into Citizens Input. All right, so with that, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're going to take the 7:05 item first, just because we just got out of that executive session and just continue with what we were working on. So we're ready for a motion on the Police Chief Contract, please?
Motion to approve the contract as proposed for Police Chief Michael Grace, effective October 5th, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
As amended.
As amended. We did have a couple clerical, yeah, two clerical things.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
All those against? Okay. So it passes.
Okay.
Three to two. All right, great. So next, we're going to do Citizens Input, and I think we have some folks here. Did you guys want to get out? We do all have your letter. We've received your letter and led, read your letter.
Okay.
Did you wish to speak this evening?
I just want to ask a question.
Okay, if you could just come up to the podium, tell us your name.
Certainly will.
And your address.
Okay.
I'm Jean Benau, 73 Oak Street here in Foxborough. I'm also a member of the COA HS Advisory Board, and as you pointed out, we have sent you a letter, and I was just wondering, we wanted some clarification, and I was wondering if you were going to read that into the record.
So we do all have the letter, and the general aura of the letter is that there seems to be frustration with a lack of process, that there seems to be an understanding that the community center is not happening.
Yeah.
So I think that we have something to say on that, because I don't think that's true.
Okay.
So we were honestly, I think, I was a little surprised by the letter, quite honestly.
Okay.
I can't speak for the board, but I hear, I see head shaking, so given that the project's not dead, we were a little confused, so wanted to just, Doc wanted to say something quickly. And we can't get into a big discussion, but wanted to give you a quick response on that.
Appreciate that.
So, thank you. Usually in Citizens Input, we don't have a dialogue, but through the chair, she's allowing me to speak on behalf, I think of the board and everybody up here at, for a few seconds. You know, we did all get your letter, we all read the letter. Those of you that don't know me, I was the Selectmen representative to the Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. We met, as the letter stated, on a number of occasions. At no time did I not miss a meeting. I knew exactly what was going on, each step of the process. When we had questions, we brought in people, Mr. Keegan, Mr. Johns, Mr. Yuckner, to clarify things for us. But I want to make a clarification. The clarification in the beginning was, is there somewhere along the process of capital improvements where the community center is going to be? And we brought Mr. Keegan and Mr. Johns in, and after, they did a little research for us, knowing that there is, and it was going to be the, the, the public safety, not public safety, I'm sorry, DPW was going to be first. That, that needs an overhaul, without a doubt. But in the process, the Taylor School was always second. The Taylor School was always second, with the community center being third. At one point during the process, we were told that that could be a long process, and maybe that community center might be able to be pushed forward.
To number two.
Huh?
To number two.
To number two. As it turns out, as we've been reading in the paper the last couple of weeks, the Taylor School's running a little bit faster than, and we still don't know how long that's going to take. That, that, that could take years, and even longer. But it's always been on our radar, and it's always, it's never been taken off the table. Bottom line. So where that misinformation's coming from, where that hearsay is coming from, that we took it off the table, just isn't true. We don't know when, we don't know how long. We have a long-range plan. Bill and I have talked about some things down the road that might be changing, that maybe, you know, we might be able to get that more in the forefront. But right now, it's, it's, it's DPW, and maybe now that we've seen the Taylor School.
So let me just add a few things to that, because it helped clarify your concerns, too, and I, and there are two things. One is the fact that we just learned, actually probably just two weeks ago, that the Taylor School may move up in terms of the funding from the state, which then would help, would then move it up on, on the funding priority for the town, because the town just can't turn off, turn around and say, look, we can't, we're not going to take 50% reimbursement for a project of that nature, because it's a very significant cost factor. The other thing that, but I just heard recently that, you know, that may or may not happen now, because, you know, the, the state has come out, they've looked at the school, and they're going to make a decision, a termination, whether or not they are going to move it up in, in consideration. The school itself is actually in decent shape. There's clearly some things that need to get done to it, there's no question about that. But the question is whether or not DESI, the Department of Education, determines that it needs to be moved up in terms of priority versus other projects that they're competing with across the state. All right, so that answer's not out yet, but at least the indication is right now that they are looking at that, whether or not that's going to come to fruition still remains to be seen. Okay? The other complicating factor is that it's going to be very difficult to do any projects right now, because interest rates are going through the roof. So whether or not we want to time any project, any projects, I mean, even DPW, we're looking at that, which we want to do, but even that, that cost could increase to the point where it makes sense for us to wait, because the, the interest rates, even us borrowing at a AAA bond rating rate, this is going to be higher than what we originally anticipated.
And materials.
And materials, and getting materials is another issue.
Yeah.
So we're looking at that, and I know that the, the Building Committee is looking at that very seriously, because they themselves, I think their, their initial look at that was higher than what they thought it was going to be. So that's a concern, and whether or not we want to do any project at this point in time remains to be seen, given, given the current nature of where we are. Interest rates are not going down anytime soon, unfortunately. So I think that's going to, that's going to hurt the ability of the town to do any major expenditures like that. So we're just being straight and honest about that, that issue. That's, that's an important consideration.
So we were surprised by the letter, because we've never made a decision, there's, you know?
No. There's been no official decision to move the, move the project.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Please come up front. No.
I'm really agreeing on the chair of the board. I think our letter was misinterpreted. What we felt was that no one had the consideration to tell us about all this after all the work we've done. We heard it on the, you know, in the newspaper, we heard word to mouth. No one came out from here and to tell us that, we're sorry, but this is the way it's going to be.
I don't think that we, that we know that, though. I think that's what we're saying. We don't know what it's going to be.
We don't know.
We don't know when the Taylor's going to happen.
No, but, but just saying the Taylor is going to be next in consideration.
We don't, we don't, we don't really know what that looks like.
We don't know that answer yet.
So.
Well, that was, that was our intent.
With respect. Yeah. Was the community center ever promised to be first or second? I.
No.
No.
Okay, so I just, my point is, you know, with respect.
Yes.
I don't feel like anybody took anything away, because it was never given, you know, you know what I mean? And we never had a conversation as a board, as a town, or anything. You know, I think DPW's on the warrant, so I think everyone knows that that's kind of what we're looking at next.
Okay, so nobody, it wasn't even considered to say, look, you guys, I know you did a lot of work for this, but it's not.
But it's, the work is still ongoing, so I don't think that the work has ended, and I don't think that it's off the table.
Well, it's ended for quite a while now. It'll be ended for a lot of years.
I think it will ramp back up, though, when, when the time comes. So we definitely appreciate everyone's efforts and work, and it is going to be a long project, and it's, it's not over by any means.
Okay.
And I think it would be premature to give you guys, have a conversation about what's going to happen when we don't know what's going to happen.
No.
And the Building Committee is looking at that, so it's not that they, you know, the next step in the process is to have the Building Committee review it, and they are in the process of doing that.
Oh, I, I said.
I'm glad that we all talked about it, then, because it seems like, you know, there's some misunderstandings, so I'm glad that you, that you came in, and I can promise, you know, as things happen, certainly be in touch. I know Doc's been to a lot of the meetings, but unfortunately, there's just not much to report yet.
Is the lawn rebuilding coming down?
We are, we are proceeding with that, and that's, we're able to do that because we actually got some of the federal money to do that.
Oh, good.
So we're, we actually have, we've got, there was a long, because of the federal process, it took a lot longer to, on the front end, so we actually got the design, in fact, I was working on something on that very, this afternoon. So that, that, and it's going to have to be bid, and we'll be working on that. We want to get it down before, before the end of this year.
Okay.
That's our, that's our goal.
Well, thank you very much for dialoguing with us this evening.
Thank you for coming in, and I promise we'll talk more, and there was nothing intentional or anything like that, so I'm glad that we chatted.
No.
Very good.
All right, is anyone else, I don't think anyone else is here for Citizens Input. Anything come in electronically? Okay. All right. Sorry, I'm just catching up to see where I'm at. So next is George with the Municipal and School Service Agreement.
Why? Aren't we supposed to?
All right. If you can walk us through this, George, let us know.
Sure.
Let us know your name for those watching at home, and.
I'm George Samia, the Finance Director for the town. What you have before you tonight is essentially an interdepartmental agreement between the school and the town in regard to the way that we report numbers that have been spent during the year to meet the ed reform requirements for the school. So what is the ed reform, when ed reform was put in, gosh, about 10, 12, 15 years ago, there are certain requirements that a town has to meet, or a school department has to meet to meet their ed reform per pupil expenditure that is, that has been put out there. Now, it's a very easy thing for somebody to come out and, and say, well, how much did you spend on the, on the, you know, how much did you put in on your general government this year? And the answer would be like $39 million, but there are a number of things that people are, are within the budget that aren't necessarily attached to the school. Some of it is health insurance, some of it is insurance on buildings, some of it is indirect costs, such as how much was, was spent by, you know, on the Highway Department towards the, towards the school. So ultimately, you, you come to an agreement between the school and the, the town as to how much you're charging. There are certain things that are going to be engraved in stone. When I said health insurance, that's a simple thing to say. You've got, I'm making up a number, 218 people at the school, and they're all on the HMO Blue Family. Multiply that times whatever it is, that's an exact number. But when you get to something to the effect of like your Highway Department, and you're saying, well, how much are we charging towards that? There's a little bit of a gray area there, and I'll, and I'm going to exaggerate this thing, but let's say on my side, I might say, well, how much snow and ice are you going to put towards the school? All of it, 500,000. And if there's no agreement there, you know, it can run off the rails. So what you're signing tonight, okay, is an agreement between the school and the town, and I'll say this, the, the amounts on here, nothing's actually changed. It's the same exact things that we've been using for the last, at least four years since I've been here, and probably five to seven years prior to my being here, all we're doing is putting it back down and sort of memorializing it on paper one more time. I think that periodically, you're supposed to do that. So again, like if, if I'm gone, Bill Yuckner's gone, and somebody else comes in and decides, well, I'm going to charge 90% of this particular budget towards there, well, we didn't agree on that, you know, that type of thing. So essentially, what you're seeing is pretty much the same thing we've been doing all along, and it's just, just memorializing.
And this is just for one year, though? This isn't for, this is just for this year? This goes forward until it's amended?
Until it's amended again, or whatever, and I think, I, I don't know when the, I know this is the first time I, I remember doing it since I've been here, so I'm not.
I don't remember.
It's a new, it's a new requirement now.
Yeah, oh, it is, okay. So, so probably going forward, it's going to be periodic or something, either, either annually, or every couple of years, or something.
So it existed, it's just more formal now?
Yes. It's more formal, yeah. Exactly.
There's no, there's no change to it, the practice.
Okay.
And actually, there's no money being moved around, it's simply a reporting.
The allocation.
Right.
Any questions on it, from anyone?
Nope.
Tree and Park is 70%, is that?
Yeah, I think what, what they're looking at, and at least as far as what Bill and I have been talking about, it's been that way for a while, but I think what they're saying is, is there's, you know, you have the facilities or the grounds of maintenance, which is a large portion of it.
All the fields, all the fields that we maintain.
And the fields and stuff are really the biggest portion of it, I mean, compared to, let's say, the Town Hall, or, or the Highway Department, or something to that effect. So they, they've always been taking about 70% and putting it towards that.
Makes sense, thanks.
All right, I don't have any questions. I think we're ready for a motion, if, I'm just giving everyone a second to digest it, since I know it is new, but I think we're ready for a motion if there's no other discussion.
Okay, motion to approve the Municipal and School Service Agreement as proposed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Right.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
And while you're here.
Sure.
Because I was going to mention it later, the Audit Committee is meeting. Do we have a date for that? We're going to appoint the last person?
October 11th.
October 11th, so, so just know that that took a while for that last audit, just with COVID and everything. We have an appointment, School Committee has an appointment, they're making, I think, at their next meeting. That committee will be fully appointed, and then that'll be the next meeting.
I already had called the, the Auditor, and I, even though it wasn't engraved in stone, I said, can I keep open the 4th and the 11th?
Okay.
We didn't, I wasn't sure exactly what date you were going to do.
So now we've got a date that we've been, we've been trying to get that hammered down for a while, so that's, that's all set.
All right. Thanks, George.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have Renee.
Just so I can get on the chair.
That's right. And we threw the second item on there, I hope you saw that, too, with the appointment of Guy. Okay, all right, great.
My name's Renee Tosi, I'm the Director of the Recreation Division of Human Services. I'm here to talk about the Halloween Parade that we're bringing back since COVID, and we're super excited about it. It's the same as it's always been.
It's great news.
The past couple of years, we did a, well, actually, last year it rained, we didn't do anything. The year before that, we did kind of like a drive-by parade type of thing. So we're bringing back the Halloween Parade as it's always been. It's going to be October 29th, it's 2:30 to 4:00. We'll gather about 2:30 to 3:00 is when the gathering will happen. We will do the judging, we'll have some volunteers come, and they judge the costumes. We have the younger kids, the, you know, three and unders, and different categories all the way up to a whole family category. At about 3:00, we're going to do the same route that we've always done. We come out of the IGO, up South Street, she's right onto Liberty, left onto Central, back right onto South. The participants will all be trick-or-treating on the businesses on Central all the way up. We have a few new businesses, which will be fun, there'll be some extra candy for them. That, that procession will be led by the Fire Department. We usually have a fire engine lead the way to start the parade. And once we, then, once we go onto Cell Street, in front of Cognance, we'll cross, we'll be crossing over to the Common. Once we're on the Common, there'll be refreshments, we do have a dance performance with the Elite Dance Group, and that's when we're going to go up onto the stage there, and just to announce the prizes and handle the prizes. After that, usually, we're done, our part is done, but I do know most of the folks make their way down to the Church of Emmanuel. They do like a trunk-or-treat and a fall festival type of thing.
And Bill has approved the, just so everyone knows, the, the town Common usage as well.
Yes. So this is for the, because the roads will have to be closed going up for the parade part of it. It'll be the same as it's always been, and hopefully, it won't rain this year.
Yeah, it's exciting. Are you guys doing the, the jack-o'-lanterns on the Common, too?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah, so people can drop off. We're doing a couple of events. I have a special needs social group that are going to do a carving. I have a carving event at Booth. I, COA's doing a carving event, and I think the Grace Chapel might be doing a carving event, so we're hoping to get quite a few pumpkins this year.
Great.
Yeah, I'm hoping Mike Johns is going to come one before he leaves.
We're going to carve a, carve a pumpkin, we're going to do some at Town Hall here.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's a fourth, there's a fourth location.
Yeah. Well, it's fun, a couple of years, like, different departments did whatever, like, they carved, the Building Department had put a wrench. I know Porta Health.
That's cute.
Had a chicken, and it said, don't eat raw chicken, that had a sign. Bob Cutler did something about voting, it was like, you know, vote soon, or something, so it was fun.
Well, it's fun.
Yeah, yeah.
A little healthy competition.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, great. Any questions on that, before we move to the second item for recreation? No? All right. Just very excited.
I know, just let's hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
I was hoping to do the pumpkin float this year, but there's no water in the pond, so.
I couldn't believe that when I heard that, that's the first time.
It's very lucky. There's, there's a little bit of water now, obviously, since the rain, but not enough to float pumpkins.
Not floating pumpkins.
No, well, not floating anything, no.
All right, so I think we have a motion for the application first.
Okay, motion to approve the public event application for Recreation Department's Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 29th, from 2:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, great. Exciting stuff. And now your next one.
Yep, so we have, I'm going to totally butcher his name, Guy.
I can't.
Carrachulo?
Carrachulo.
All right, we're going with Carrachulo.
Okay.
He is going to, he would like to be appointed as our new Associate Member of the Rec Board.
All right, great. And I know he's been really involved with the skate park and some other stuff, so.
Absolutely, yes, he's been a super helpful, and, and both he and his wife are very helpful with communicating with us, you know, whenever there's issues or things like that, but he's been a great help, a great asset to that skate park.
Yeah, it's great to get new people on boards and.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So formally, although he's been involved.
He's got two younger boys, I think one's in middle school, one's in elementary, fifth grade, I'm going to say third and fifth, so hopefully, they'll be with us for a while.
All right, great.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Motion to appoint Guy Carrachulo to the Board of Recreation as an Associate Member for a term to end 5/31/25.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Renee.
All right, great, and I think that the department just entered, entered right on time. Are you guys waiting for anyone else? Do you want us to skip out, or is this the whole crew?
No, it's us.
All right, come on up.
Good.
If you could just come up, introduce yourselves, and then go into your, your program here.
Good evening, Mike Grace, the Police Chief, and I'd like to introduce Sergeant Collins, Officer Allen, Meg Allen, who's also one of our SROs, and two of my patrol officers, Paul Polystopoulos and Patrick McCarthy. So we're here to just, we'll be very brief, but it's kind of important that the community know what's going on, and it's kind of the success we've had, unfortunately, on a, on a matter that is, is, is sad. But we have been awarded a grant, a two-part grant of $100,000 this fiscal year, and $140,000 for next year, a competitive grant from the Department of Public Health, specifically for COVID-19 Sexual and Domestic Violence Trust Fund out of EOPS. It was a statewide competitive grant, only four departments in the Commonwealth received the grant, and we were one of the four. With that grant, I'm going to give a very brief history, because honestly, this, this issue and the work that this team does, and they're all going to speak a little about their role, we could take up the whole night. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go as fast as I can, just to touch upon some of the important things, is this grant, and we've encountered, breaks, is broken down into five, four different pieces. One of them is expenses for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. As I encountered on a matter one evening, we, we're obligated by law and by statute to keep victims safe. We don't have the option, we can't be closed, we can't say we're unavailable. If that means we post a police officer at someone's house, that's what we do. We never leave a victim in a position where they are not safe. Well, I have a MOU at some of the hotels, in case we end up with a victim, and they're very accepting to allow someone stay for a night, until we ran into a situation where Xfinity had a concert, and Gillette had an event, and there wasn't a hotel to be had. And then I found out through Town, Town Finances, is that we actually can't purchase a hotel room using the department credit card, not because the town doesn't want to, it's just because of the way the law is set up. So this grant allows us direct expenses to victims for hotels, for phones, for food, for any resource that they may need, medication, to go pick up at CVS for their kids. It's all accounted for, everything broke, is broken down, there's a quarterly reporting to the state on the matter, and everything is documented. The grant also allows for additional domestic violence training for the department across the board, and specifically for this team that has tackled this, this task. It also allows for program development, working directly from the Police Department or working with outside agencies, to develop programs that will help prevent victims of domestic violence or sexual assault. Examples could be empowerment programs like RAD for our high school students who are going off to college, programs like that, that would eliminate and hopefully prevent maybe situations. And lastly, there is some salary replacement to the fund that goes directly for the office's time being spent. They don't get it, and it's, it replaces what the towns are refunded. So part of the grant is to break down how much time you're spending, what you're doing with your follow-ups, and how many are you having. That's a very brief summary of the, the application process, and I do want to give everybody credit. Right now, I may be presenting this award, but Lieutenant Fitzgerald spearheaded, along with Meg Allen and Sergeant Collins, the amount of time that they spent working on working on this competitive grant and the applications and the abstract and the data that they presented to the state is extremely dynamic and the work that they've done. So this team that we have has been in place since the beginning, since we came out of COVID in about January, February of 2021. We had an extremely high number. I think everybody heard about it. They saw it in the news. We're gonna have issues. We're gonna have problems. Well, we are the ones who actually calculate that data. We actually get the calls for service. And this team saw a gap, and they realized that, obviously, all offices responded to domestic violence, recently being certified and by mass accreditation. So we have the highest standard. So every officer is already meeting every state standard. But this team realized the gap, the gap of what do we do afterwards? What do we do tomorrow? What do we do next week? What do we do a month from now? What do we do six months from now? And I'm gonna let them talk about that aspect. Within the department, about five years ago, we were one of four community, now it's one of six departments in the Commonwealth that had a pilot program of creating domestic violence check sheets that were being used to generate a statewide policy. The data collected from that actually changed how the police officers respond and follow up on domestic violence. We then were one of four departments nationwide that was part of a perf study, including, I believe, it was Houston, Texas, Houston, Dallas. I think it was Dallas, Texas, and two other major cities that took all of our systems statewide, district attorneys, resource groups across the Commonwealth, and helped form a nationwide policy that we were part of. So this obviously, we are, our approach on domestic violence and sexual assault is a victim-based approach. That's how we look at every single one of these situations. Again, we had the gap, so the team was created. Obviously, when you have a team, you need a boss. Not because she does everything, but you need someone to spearhead it and manage it. And at this point, I'm just gonna let each member of the team just kinda talk about their role and how they deliver their service day in, day out. I do wanna make it clear, these aren't like extra positions. These are what they do while they're working, all their other jobs. So on top of their regular sectors or overseeing the SROs, they do this on top of that. And many times at four o'clock, they're not going home. Or as you see Paul and Pat back there, we also noticed we had gaps on weekends and nights. So they're on our second shift. So the information is passed from one shift to the other. So we leave no one behind ever. And I'll hand it over to Sergeant Collins and her role as supervising this team.
So I'm lucky to work with all these people and form this team that we have found has been really helpful in the community. Basically, my role is the shift supervisor gets incidents that could possibly be domestic, physical or verbal, and I look at the situation, see what services might be needed. If sometimes it's an elder services, sometimes it requires DCF to be involved. And then I submit them to one of these officers to follow up, and we kinda work collectively to make sure that the resources are given to the victims. The chief mentioned the victim-centered approach, which, you know, in incidents that might happen on shift, we give them the abuse law. We go over their 201A and their rights. But what we found was that in those incidents with trauma, that a lot of times it's too much for the victim to actually receive what resources are actually available. So the follow-up, and that can be sometimes depending on the situation, could be the next day or it could be a couple of days, depending on if they're displaced. We make the phone call. We, if it's safe, we might do mailing. Sometimes we figure out if, a lot during COVID, we would do an email and we'd have the officer on scene initially, find out if an email was a safe way to reach them. That, you know, with the gaps, that made us realize where children services, more children services were needed, more financial services were needed, and where people were really displaced and in desperate situations. So this team has really been instrumental in us making sure that after the incident occurs, that we can do some more investigations and dig a little deeper what people really, what people really need. And it's been just really helpful, and I feel like we're feeling we're really empowering the victims to be supported and make the decisions that are right for them and their families.
So Meg, maybe you can talk about briefly, because I know we'll be here all night, is some of your history prior to being a police officer. And maybe could you just give a quick rundown about what the team does once you get, once you get the call?
Sure.
So again, my name's Officer Megan Allen. Prior to working for the Foxborough Police Department, I worked for a nonprofit that served victims of domestic and sexual violence as an advocate, primarily working in the court system, assisting victims and obtaining protection orders. So I just wanted to address a couple of things. Number one, the fact that domestic violence continues to be one of the most pervasive social and criminal issues that we deal with. It's one of the primary calls that we deal with here in town. The effects of it ripple out. They affect family members, children primarily. So working in the schools, you know, as well as being one of the domestic violence officers, I see the effects of the trauma that family violence causes at all levels. There is so much overlap between domestic violence and substance abuse, mental health issues. The trauma just, if, the good thing about programs like this is that if we can address these issues in a certain way, and if we can earn the trust of the community members who are affected by this and intervene in an impactful way, then we can cut off or we can at least minimize the pervasiveness of that trauma. So if we get a call at the officer level, myself, officers Polisopoulos and McCarthy, when those calls get forwarded to us after review by our sergeant, we get to work in making those connections. So sometimes that looks like, as Sergeant Collins mentioned, a phone call. Sometimes it's a house visit. What we really have to do is we start with an investigation. We investigate a little bit beyond what was initially collected at the scene. We're looking for red flags. We're looking for weapons. We're looking for things like that. Once we're able to make a connection with the victim or survivor who's being affected by that domestic dispute, we jump right into doing a risk assessment. So we have some tools that are used across the Commonwealth that have been developed by advocates, the DAs, all of these stakeholders who have come together and really created a great tool for that risk assessment. So we'll do, we'll complete that, and then we'll move on to uncovering any other concerns that are going on. A lot of times, as Sergeant Collins mentioned, when we're interacting with someone who is experiencing domestic violence, we're usually, it's what we call a hot scene. So what we know about trauma and the effects of trauma is that that person's brain is not gonna be functioning in the same way that it normally would with their adrenaline pumping, with their fear centers having recently been activated. So having this follow-up program where we're able to connect with these folks after a traumatic incident allows them the time to process the incident. It allows us an opportunity to help them process that incident. And it allows us to talk about not only available resources, but also covering things like safety planning, making sure that they're aware of their rights, making sure that they are safe no matter where they're at. We know with domestic violence that it sometimes takes an average of seven times for a victim to leave their abuser. So a lot of times when we're interacting with these survivors, they're, they may not be ready to leave. And it's our job to make sure that we are interacting with them in a way that is nonjudgmental, that is supportive and that is empowering. So that's really what we do. And I'd like to thank, obviously, my sergeant, you know, Val Collins, also the chief, and also the town for supporting us being able to do our jobs in this way, because it is, it takes a little bit more than what we're typically able to do on patrol. It takes time. It takes funding to be able to connect these survivors with services. So it's, we, the work is extremely important, and we're glad we're able to do it.
Thank you. So that's a brief summary of, it's very brief or how dynamic. All of this is documented. All of the, all of the follow-up cases are all on a spreadsheet, so everybody has access to it on the team. So if it's a different day or if it's a different week, we have a resource. We know where we're at. We have all the point of contacts. We have all the phone numbers. And I can even say that the team took on the responsibility of building a 43-page community resource guide, which everything, that ultimately will put on our town's website, everything from substance abuse, juvenile issues, homeless issues, elder services that the town can access as well if they have a situation that maybe they're not necessarily calling the police department, but they're like, geez, what do I, what do I do? It's, the work that they put into this, it's absolutely dynamic. And there's things that I never knew existed, so.
I just have a question. Terrific work that you're doing. In terms of Norwood Hospital closing, you know, what's your backup in the medical system now for sexual violence or trauma? And how's that interface working?
Sure. So regarding sexual assaults, we have, I'd be happy to jump in and explain the SAIN program, which stands for Sexual Assault Nurse Examination. There are SAIN nurses that are on call out of Milford Hospital, as well as Sturdy. Essentially, but regardless of where you are located geographically in the Commonwealth, you have the right, if you have been victimized in the form of a sexual assault. That's also part of what we do, is making sure that victims are aware of what their rights are. They have the right to be taken to a hospital. We will assist with that. They have a right to be, to have a sexual assault nurse examination completed by a qualifying nurse. We will respond to those hospitals and will help advocate for those victims in that way. There are also a lot of nonprofits in the area that also have advocates who will get dispatched out to those calls. But with Norwood closing, there hasn't been, you can't skip a beat. I mean, people are entitled to these things, and there are measures in place. And that's another thing in terms of supporting this type of program. Obviously, it's not just domestic violence. It is also geared towards sexual assault. Both Sergeant Collins and I are sexual assault, certified sexual assault investigators. Officers Polisopoulos and McCarthy will be after they complete the training, I believe, next month. So we have a, we have a special approach. We work closely with the district attorney's office, with our local children's advocacy centers, with our other advocate partners to make sure that we're attending to those survivors and in the way that they deserve to be tended to.
Thank you.
It's definitely, you know, a tough topic, and it happens in the community though, and it's great to see that we have these additional resources available. Is it kind of like a use it or lose it type program? Like we have the $100,000 and it's to, it's up to that amount. It won't roll over or forward or anything?
They haven't said that they won't.
Okay.
But, so it's their first year rolling it out. I'm not sure where we'll be in two years.
I think the grant goes, as of right now, to 2025, so we can continue up until then with the application.
Yes.
And adding on to any other expenses that come up, because we're learning and we'll learn from the victims what is the most useful tool. And that's why we go to trainings. Actually, all of us today went to an advanced domestic violence training today. And like Meg mentioned, Officer Polisopoulos and McCarthy will go to the sexual assault certification, which is 40 hours next month. So we just continue to train and to learn more from the victims and what they need. And that's the victim-centered approach that we all have and mindset. And many of the other officers are also getting trained to be helpful.
Any other comments, questions? No?
Just wanted to say that they're impressive. And thank you, because, I mean, we all see on the news. I think those are probably some of the most dangerous calls that you get. You hear of, you know, somebody has, you know, somebody in a house, and the police come to help, and it always seems like an officer gets hurt, and then he takes his own life, or he or she takes his own life. So it's, you know.
One thing a lot of people don't know is domestic violence and sexual assault calls for service are exempt from the public records. So you won't have a police department advertising those calls for service to protect the victims. So in a community you don't really know unless you know. So we're doing everything we can to help our residents in this, on this matter.
Bravo, good for you guys. Thank you for that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
All right, up next, we have NPS LLC New Alcohol Service Method at Gillette Stadium. If you guys can come up, introduce yourselves. And we have a PDF here that came over earlier today. So I don't know that we've had full time to review it. So if you can, you know, walk us, walk us through everything.
Sure. Jessinos, Director of International Affairs and Business Development for NPS LLC.
And Jim Nolan, Chief Operating Officer for NPS LLC. Do you each have the document?
We do, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I can start by, you're saying we've, we've looked at this new technology. So Gillette Stadium, you know, has many beer portables. And we follow consistent security procedures with respect to those portables. As we look at, you know, new technology and new things to incorporate into our game day, yeah, we found a machine that is used in many stadiums already, NBA, Major League Baseball, NFL. Our new Director of Concessions uses it at the Washington Nationals. And we wanna deploy this portable at Gillette Stadium on game days. And the difference between, the only difference between this portable and a typical draft portable is the final act of pouring the beer is done by a machine and not by a human. And from our, from our perspective, every other piece of the transaction is the same. One of our team-certified trainers is gonna interact with the guest. They're gonna check their ID. They're gonna check for sobriety, no different than we do with another portable. At that point, the person wouldn't walk up to the machine. When they go to the machine, they would insert their credit card the same way they would at a portable. At that point, they would choose their beverage from a choice of four beverages. They'd put a cup under the dispenser. The machine would dispense the beer. So at that point, the only difference between what we do at a current draft portable and what this portable would do is the physical act of putting the liquid into the cup. From a machine perspective, the machine only allows the purchase of two, of two drinks. So that's our, that's our policy. And this machine, you know, for that transaction, only two beers can be poured. You can choose one or you can choose two. The machine itself, it's not like a Pepsi soft-serve, Pepsi dispenser, where you can pull it out and take a sip and put it back in for more. You know, it's a, it's a predetermined amount that gets poured into the cup. And that's consistent for every pour. The, and we can walk through the deck, but the way we, the way we set this up is, first of all, it's a very small unit. It's about 10 feet wide. It has four points of sale. The patron itself is gonna walk through a queuing system that we use as a product called Tensibarea, to get to the point of where they interact with the team-trained employee to have their ID checked. From there, the only place they can go is to the machine itself. We have a second team-trained person in the area. And again, it's a small area, as the picture depicts. The second person, their job is to, number one, ensure no one gets into that area who hasn't gone through the front part of the queue. So no one kinda sneaks behind. And they're also there to ensure that no one gets more than two beers. Now, the machine itself will only pour two per credit card transaction, but in theory, a person could put the card in again. So the physical person in this small space is the one that's gonna control that. And that's really no different than a beer portable where someone walks up. Now they get two beers. They can't turn around and put them on the ground and turn back, because the human element is still there. This human element is still there to control the transaction. So, you know, why are we doing it? One is, if you've been to a game at Gillette at kickoff or at halftime, it's impossible to get through lines. This year in particular, the North End Zone, we lost our large concession stand to construction. We lost the Bud Light Pavilion to construction, and we lost one of our food courts. So we have a lot of pressure on the north end of the 100th level of the stadium. And this is just one more point of sale out of many to help service our guests. For the 2023 season, we only intend to deploy one, because we look at this as a proof of concept. We wanna make sure that it works for our customers. We wanna make sure that, you know, it's a, it's a fast transaction. We don't wanna, we don't wanna have a transaction where we've got a line of 100 people waiting to use the machine. You know, but our hope is that it's successful, and then, you know, we could look at possibly deploying it in other areas of the stadium. And specifically, we're looking at, at technology to incorporate into the North End. So, you know, what we're looking for is, you know, this is, you know, from my perspective, it's very, there's very little difference between our existing portables and this unit, because our controls are the same. You know, our attention to providing proper alcohol service is the same. And literally, the only difference with this unit is, instead of a human being pouring the beer and handing it to you after you've gone through the ID check, the sobriety check, and made your payment, instead of the human pouring the beer, it's a physical machine that's pouring the beer for you.
Questions?
Curious, is there value to having the beer actually poured? Is there a machine that just opens the bottle, like a vending machine? And what's a plastic bottle of beer out there for a customer?
You know, so we do, we do sell bottled beer as well. And, you know, so there's, you know, you know, some customers like draft beer and some customers like bottled beer. Some customers like IPA and some like a light beer. You know, so this is a draft beer portable. So there's, there's physical kegs that are behind the wall. You know, they're, they're locked and secured. And the, in this machine, there's a whole bunch of different varieties of machines that pour draft beer. Some are really expensive, some are really cool. We've looked at them. You know, there was a machine that a human being does. It's neat. You push the cup down and it pours the beer from the bottom up. You know, so there's gimmicks out there. This is, this is, this has been used in enough stadiums, you know, Denver Broncos have it, Green Bay Packers have it. Washington Commanders are putting it in right now. And like I said, our Director of Concessions has experience with this, this exact unit at the Washington Nationals. He joined us this spring. Having two human beings operating four points of sale, you know, it allows us, it allows us more throughput to individuals who are of age and of a sobriety level where they're entitled to purchase a beer. And again, when we look at it in the context of Gillette serving, you know, 60,000 people on a game day, you know, this is a drop in the bucket, but we feel this is a good drop in the bucket. You know, because it gives us, you know, a new technology for our fans to engage with. You know, and if successful, we wanna see how we can incorporate that further. You know, you know, we've, we've tried new things that have been really successful. You know you know we've we've tried new things that have been really successful like our markets, they've been a home run, the ale houses we put in have been a home run and we're just we're always trying to do more for the fan. And in this in in this particular unit, it was in a location where last year we had a different type of market that wasn't as successful so we removed it and you know we're trying this this year. But I think if it's successful, it can be additive to the overall experience for our customers.
Under your current system, you know and I've been there many, many times so I can speak to it, if you have someone who's obviously inebriated and wants to get two beers and you know there's a person there, how do you deal with that situation?
Well, I mean the first thing is the person, the person will say, I'm not serving you. That's that's the first thing is I'm just not serving you. If that person if that person you know becomes belligerent, our first escalation is to our security, you know Team Ops which is which are our folks. And in most of our, every one of our points of sale is in very close proximity to a security guard. The next escalation is to the chief. Not him specifically, maybe if he was there. He and I didn't get accosted when we were together on Sunday but but the next escalation is for Team Ops to bring in what they have, so Team Ops has you know they have ushers, they have people and then they have people who roam and then they have specific teams that get involved when things escalate. So it would start from the the trained alcohol server to say no and if it escalates from there it goes to security, then to one of our teams and then potentially to to law enforcement. And if we think someone's had too much to drink, you know whether they came from the parking lot or whatnot, we'll ask the chief if they could do a sobriety check because there's sometimes individuals who've had too much and they need to be placed in protective custody. Thankfully the days of you know a significant number of PCs back in the you know early two thousands when we were cleaning up Gillette, it's a much better situation so we typically only have a handful of custodies on game day and you know hopefully nothing escalates to that.
Related to that question, you know every time someone comes through, we just haven't seen you guys in a while because it's business as usual, you know we always talk about tips and serve safe training. So on the presentation it says team certified, so can you verify that every single person serving alcohol in the stadium is tips or team certified?
Yeah, we're team certified.
Okay, talk to us, I don't know that one.
Yeah, so team is teams is techniques in effective alcohol management, it's a program just like tips and it's a program that's used by every pretty much every professional sports team. But it's a program that any bar or restaurant can can partake in. And because of our volume, you know we have certified team trainers on our staff. So as we have new bartenders come in or hawkers or beer pours, they go through our training before they can serve alcohol.
Okay. And you know I'm glad that we're here talking about it because it is as much as you can say it is you know just another portable container you know to serve beer, the reality is is it is one on one you know today and we're going to like kind of this two on one type of model. So I'm glad that you know we're able to hear about it, kind of see it, understand how it'll work, you know before it's put into.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is on the every one of our transactions is one on one. So like we we have a human being engaged with the customer to make a determination that we can serve alcohol. So even with this unit, every single person is gonna have that one on one interaction with the team trained person before they can make the transaction.
Okay.
And the person on the backside, they're ensuring that A, no one gets to the front of the line without going through that check, two, somebody doesn't try to do more than two, and three, if that person you know if if someone if they see something that the first team trained person didn't see, maybe the person's fumbling with their credit card you know and they they can't work the machine because it's actually technically more difficult for someone to operate this thing than have someone hand you a beer. But if the second team trained person sees something that's going on that they don't like, they can intervene at that point and say, you know what sir, you know what ma'am, you know you can't you know we're not gonna let you have that beer.
Any other questions? I do want to have Chief Grace come up too.
Yeah, I mean so because I serve alcohol, it always interests me when there's something new, like when the Axe the Axe Place brought this, I was kind of like looking like, how is this gonna work? Now, I guess is, one question is, I think I might know the answer. Does it ever, this this contraption that's gonna read the credit card, does it ever tell you that somebody's come through four times?
No.
So you still, which which wouldn't wouldn't happen in any any regular service. I was just wondering if that would almost be something great because you would then you would know, oh this person's come through, but you still don't know if they're drinking a beer and passing one off or whatever. I was just thinking in my head, I'm like, that's actually pretty good because it would monitor more what they've drank and then even a person because I mean we all know, I always say someone sits down at a bar and you give you know they seem fine and you put the drink down and all of a sudden that's the one that starts making them cuckoo. So but there's there's no way to to predict that in any way of serving other than just you know looking at them when they come up. So if they come up and would you would your first contact person automatically maybe maybe you guys have a little signal, puts his hand up, somebody comes over because if that person feels that they shouldn't, they may walk away and just go to another you know concession stand and maybe that person's not gonna see what that person said. So will you guys be proactive and and maybe grab them right there and say, this might be somebody that shouldn't?
So when we see someone who we think is really over the edge.
Yeah.
That's where we'll engage our security.
Yeah.
And say, look, you know, can we ask this person to go back to their seats and just enjoy the game?
Yeah.
It's interesting you say about the machine that you know can it count it?
Yeah.
There's actually machines that that do that, I think there's one at a at a place in Lexington and what you what you actually can do and by the way, to your point, for us to try to do something even more sophisticated, if someone gets denied here, they're just gonna because we have we put a limit on the card, they're just gonna go to another machine.
Yeah.
But there are machines out there where you can go into the the bar or restaurant, have your ID checked and then put money on a card that goes into the machine and the money gets deducted based on how many ounces you pour. So they're controlling the pour by letting by how much you buy and once you once you've used that amount. But but for us with so many different points of sale.
Yeah.
You know trying to go to that because we have two windows of time during a game, we have the fifteen minutes before kickoff and we have the fifteen minutes at halftime and that's where we're
Yeah.
We're trying to.
Everybody everybody knows the beer stands are about to close
Yep.
And they're like, let's grab one more before we're done. Well, you know something, it's I mean it's just it's alcohol service is just tricky in general because you know we you know you want to say that people should have some responsibility for what they're doing and their actions. So I was just curious if this like read how many times they went through. But the only other question I I have, it's not really so much about the service, it's how you guys have it laid out. So I'm looking here, I'm just assuming this is like on on a concourse area, I can see the wall in the back, I'm familiar with the stadium as well. So how how many times are you gonna like how far out is this gonna come? Then it just like I guess it's it's a different way of blocking the traffic of the concourse, the other way they're just this way, this way they're kind of through there, I was just curious if um
Yes.
You know if people are gonna be walking, not so much into get in line but walking into people or you know.
Yeah, so we've actually so if you go back a couple of years, the only thing we did was walk straight on, that was all we did.
Yeah.
And and more recently we've started, we started working with the the tense barrier system because instead of it going all the way across the concourse where we could turn people and have them sideways, it's been it's been better. It's still at halftime of an NFL game, it's crazy. You know so in this case it doesn't come out, it doesn't come out too far to impede the flow any differently than our other our other locations. And in this case in particular, we want to we want to funnel people, we have to funnel people to that one point, that one point of entry.
Yeah.
I was a little surprised that it's like just the you know ropes anyone can pull down but I trust you guys you know have it figured out in a way that that it will make sense.
And if 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 I could just if I could demonstrate and I'm not kidding if you can come up to the stadium and see it, but it starts about here and it probably ends about here.
No, I saw it, I saw it in person on Sunday.
We've got one person standing in front of Jess that's checking the ID and the other person is standing at the podium.
Yep.
You know so no one's gonna, I mean there's four feet between the two of them for someone to in theory get under and this one of the things this person's gonna do is say, this is the only.
Yeah, I just I imagine they're gonna be helping people use the machine, you might step over here, you know, it's gonna it's gonna you know have have some learning curve I assume.
The machine, the machine has, the machine has in the in the screen within the smaller box, it has the instructions and it's very intuitive, it tells you exactly what to do. And then on the screens above, it's gonna the the screen, the black screens above are video screens and one of them is gonna be instructions. So as you're waiting in line, you'll see how to use it. But it's as simply as as putting your credit card in, choosing one or two. And from there you go over to where it pours and it's telling you what items, you know what are your four items and you just hit the button on one and it pours.
So is each each station have the the credit card, you're gonna walk up, you're gonna do it right there and then just
Yes.
Pour pour right.
So each so each station has its own credit card and each station has the same four beers. And the tap system behind it is what's controlling what goes to it. And what this one specifically is gonna have, it's gonna have two Bud Lights, a Mick Ultra and then the Cisco Forever New England Beer. So that's what we'll pour but in theory you could pour anything that's on tap.
Yeah. And just just my my thought of like I'm always thinking what could go wrong, not that you guys haven't, this is your business but so you know you have those people suggestion, maybe you guys aren't that you know people will screw this up, you know that's just the nature of you know, oh they're looking, they're whatever, you know someone goes to, would the cup come down itself or something or will they have to hold the cup or?
So you the cup is the cup is you have to take the cup down, this is part of you know someone so you have to take the cup down, you put it under and you hit a button, okay? Then you take that button, you take that one out and so again, walking out with four draft beers without top, it's not
Yeah.
It's not happening.
No.
So they take the second one down, put it in there, now they're done and they walk out.
I'm I'm thinking of like someone who's gonna spill it, not put the cup all the way under or whatever. I I would I would say you know maybe this is what you guys are gonna do, I would you know as this is rolling out until people get used to using it, I would post somebody right there too because I I like I think what Leah just said.
Yeah, like someone's gonna say, oh my card doesn't work and someone steps over and helps them, you know like.
Yeah, you hate to see your two main people to make sure this is successful are are one and two, checking the ID and and you know and that person who's giving that extra look at you know if they should be getting another beer and if they get turned around and someone says, hey, I didn't you know and they turn or whatever. So like I said, just maybe you know I guess I
I was surprised it wasn't like a hard, I was surprised it wasn't a hard barrier at each side versus like the Disneyland you know flexible stuff but I'm sure that Chief Grace has thought of that and you guys have thought of that.
Yeah.
And another and another great control on this machine too is you know when Chief Grace tells us that we're shutting alcohol off for the event, it's this is controlled by an app. So so we can go into an app and program the time that he tells it to shut off. So there's no you know, once it goes off, lights go off, it's powered down, it can't pour another beer. The only other beer it will pour is if you have successfully run your credit card, when it shuts off, it will fulfill that transaction but no more. And what I like about it is every other portable and you've been a bartender when you shut things off, every other portable, the 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 beer pours get yelled at for not serving them a beer.
Yeah.
And it's like, no, we're closed, that's the end of the story but
There's nobody yelling.
They don't want to hear it. Here there's no one to yell at, they can turn around at these people and it's like, machine's off.
You know I think the improvement here is you have a person at the front of the line focused on sobriety. You really don't have that now. You have the pourer in the current system has to do that but also pour, you know and keep the line going and then that person gets their beers and they're gone. He's not he she's not focused on that anymore. You have one person dedicated to sobriety. Now whether or not that slows down the line, that's not feasible, but I think that's an improvement.
Look, if if I'll be candid with you, if these machines are working so well, we need two ID checkers at the front, we're gonna put our two ID checkers in front. We're gonna learn a lot as as we use this to you know to because we want this to be a great experience for our employees, we want this to be a great experience for the guests and you know like we would add more resource to it if it made it a better experience.
Chief Grace, can you come up?
Chair, just before the chief comes up, go ahead chief, come on up, it's fine. I just wanted to add some context to this discussion because I think it's important, while the procedure seems simple enough, think about what's happened here, we've gone through, we've entered a new era. Because in the past three months or two months, you've seen crazy axes come through with that added a a similar type device to their facility. A new new approach where alcohol is now being served you know effectively but remotely so to speak. Now the same technology is being applied on a larger scale at Gillette Stadium, which in itself is fine but it just needs to be explained and I'm glad you're here tonight doing that because you can see there's a lot of questions about it because it's new. And then also bear in mind that now there's no cash at at Gillette Stadium, everything's done through credit card. So it's the the world has evolved and just within the past year, just in a couple ways, I dare say that this is just the beginning in many ways, I think they're looking at all new ways in which technology will play a role. When when Jim came in and Jess came in this afternoon to explain it to the chief and I about how this is gonna work, I had the same reaction that Dennis had was that this actually could improve things because you know when you're when you're there in a line, the first thing you think about doing is talking to the person who's pouring the beer. That slows the process down. So now you have the the system's completely automated, all you're gonna do is basically do the do the pour yourself but at the same time you're being checked for sobriety. That's that's an improvement, however, it's new and so therefore we need to have the explanation tonight and dare say that it's it's effectively amends their license to allow them the ability to do it remotely now or through technology as opposed to the the standard approach which is the way we've been doing it for years, year and year over year.
Thank you. Couple excellent topics that were covered here. We went through this about two weeks ago, the concept. There were some questions about fencing and gating. One of the the bicycle fencing sounds fantastic, it feels like it would be more secure. The issue with that is if we had a critical incident in the stadium, we need to collapse those lines quickly in order to move people. Having a fence locked in, sticking out, blocking a large portion of the concourse is is a pinch point and we wouldn't be able to move it in the moment. So that's, the flexible line works better. I will say one thing with past fans, if someone cuts you, we're gonna know about it. So because it's game on, okay, let's be realistic. People are waiting, they're patient, if someone cuts, everybody's gonna, they're gonna stand out. Our deployment along the one hundred concourse, as Jim mentioned, the Team Ops deals with fan code of conduct issues, they deal with guest services issues, we deal with more of the police matters. So their team does intervene, they do see arguments that are non criminal, that they work out, they make suggestions, go back to see and ultimately that de-escalation because people want to stay, they want to watch the game, they paid a lot of money, they're fans. And that that usually works and when it doesn't work, that's when we get called. And at that point, the property owner makes the notification that they don't want this person on their property. As the property owner, they make that decision, we don't, unless we see a crime in our presence. So if they make that notification, then we facilitate that removal of that party. I will say, when I look at any liquor issue from the law enforcement perspective and the town regulations, is the enforceability option within law enforcement. I can say, this is actually easier for law enforcement to to observe and look for violations if we have concerns. Because literally any one of us can stand back and make sure people are checking IDs from far away. When you have a beer line going and they're fifty deep, there's no one up front, we can't tell at all unless you know we stand right next to them. They are doing it, I mean that's not the issue whether or not they're not doing it. But real but when we talk about this change from the the town liquor regulations, any law enforcement officer can stand back, make an observation of their IDs being checked from far away. And so I I don't have a concern with the ID part and they you know the the teams program that they use, train the trainer concept, obviously it's approved with the ABCC as well, so it isn't something that isn't allowed, that is allowed in Massachusetts. So it isn't something that isn't, um, allowed, that is allowed in Massachusetts. So I think this is the future. I think this is us going to Stop and Shop and all of a sudden you're, you're doing your own transaction and you're not, you know, the high school kid isn't taking your money or taking your card anymore.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you know, um, you know, and I remember, we all remember going to the gas station, not having to go inside and go, oh my God, I, you know, and now we, we don't think twice about it. I think it's the future. Uh, as long as the town can regulate it, which I feel we can, I, I think we'll, I think we'll see this take off. And I don't think we'll just see it at Gillette. I think we'll see it many, many other places. It's, as, as Bill says, it's a little bit of the changing of the times, but it's all within the regulation. It's all within the license. It's within the state guidelines. Um, and again, we'll, they'll, um, they'll know what, if, if this is successful. A lot of people could be wanting, they wanna see a person. They wanna go to the same line, they go to the same person, they go to the same area. They're, they are creatures of habit. We know that. They know when to go, what bathroom to take and what, and what, um, what vendor to go to's because they're faster, so.
And they know what beers are specifically at that venue.
Yep.
That's what you drink, you're, that's where you're gonna, you're gonna gravitate. People are gonna, like you said, gee.
So I did walk through it. I did have, um, a lot of questions. Um, we addressed them. And I will tell you, there's no way someone's carrying four 22-ounce beers, drafts, and not collapsing them all over themselves. You can't do it. Once you pour one, one hand's already tied up. There's no shelf. You can't rest them. So now you got, so now it, it's, it's a nice safeguard for us because now they got one, now the only one other hand, it's done and out.
Well, I think it was all good discussion and I'm glad that we had it because it is, it is different.
And lastly, I just wanna expand on one thing, is the customer service aspect. Because a lot of times when you have people who are upset, the card doesn't work, I didn't get this, I didn't get this. It creates, sometimes conversation creates confrontation. Um, the person who's checking the IDs will have the authority. The kinda like, you know, like, um, I'm showing my blue light specialty, the person comes over from Kmart who can override the register. There is someone who can help that customer who just dropped it. Because it's gonna happen to alleviate any, um, issues. Or, you know, telling them, you have to go to guest services and they just want their beer and go back to their seat. So that was also addressed, that they'll have that, um, that option.
The machine doesn't ask to tip, does it?
No.
That's a great question.
In two things with people at home, am I correct that everybody is carded at Gillette? No matter if you walk up, walk up and you're 80 years old? Did someone tell me that one time?
So, so our policy is that we, we card anyone who looks like they're under 30 years old.
Okay, okay. I thought, because I thought way back.
Way back, you're right. They were carded in 70-year-old people.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. Because I think I remember being in a line and somebody, yeah.
They're still carded now.
Yeah.
No, not 29-year-olds.
Yeah.
You fall into the.
And the other thing, chiming off what Bill said about how things are just changing. So when Crazy Axes was here, I just, I made a joke. I go, oh my God, you're gonna be taking away my job, right? You're, you're creating no need for a person to serve you, joking around. Well, on Facebook, somebody put like, oh, and one of the selectmen was worried about her job or something, or whatever. And, and you know, I, yeah. Like I was kinda like, for, for you guys, any, any place, never mind taking, you can't get people to work. I, and, and we know, we've seen what it's done up to, with you guys getting into the stadium and stuff. So if there's a way to make the fans be able to get a, get a beverage quicker and it's not staying in long lines because you don't, you're not staffed, whatever, it's a good, that's a good thing too.
Any other questions, Paul?
No, I think we're ready for a vote, right, guys? Ready for a motion?
A motion to approve an amendment to the alcohol, alcohol service license at Gillette Stadium.
Second.
Any further discussion? I don't think so. We should have lengthy one, but all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jess. Gazoon hack, by the way.
That was pretty loud.
About 20 minutes late, but I was like.
All right, so next, I think you all know that we are closing the warrant. And while the warrant is not final, um, we have a number of articles that are on there and you can see the draft on page three. It looks like there's nine articles so far. Nothing is a surprise, except maybe the last one. So I will have Bill talk about that, um, since that is a new citizen's petition that's coming through.
Yes.
And we don't, there's no other citizen's petitions that are out there?
No.
This is, okay.
No, this is the only one that I'm aware of, uh, and if not, and if after tonight, that will be in anyway, so. Um, so the, the, the final one, the, the other ones, um, are ones I think pretty self-explanatory, and they're no surprises. The one that, um, uh, the electronic billboards is one that which, uh, the, the folks that, that came forward at the annual town meeting for approval, uh, which, which was, which was defeated by town meeting. Um, there was some discussion, quite a bit of discussion of concern about where the billboard was being, one of the billboards being located near DPW. This proposal will not have that in that. It will just be for the area. Um, I think Arthur Rounds is the individual who's petitioning to get this put in. And, um, the, the, the counsel for Mr. Rounds has asked that this be, uh, be considered and they are collecting signatures now for the, for the 100 signatures to be included. So they had, did send a letter to make sure that a slot was held for the warrant, so before you close it tonight. So.
So with that, um, any other discussion before we close the warrant? That's just the, the, yeah.
Um, so the article around the change of the name of this board is not there, is it?
No, it's number one.
It is, yeah, first.
That's there.
Thought it was.
That's the article one.
Article one.
And, and they're still, I mean, that one's probably more final, but, you know, the placeholder, that's the one right there, article one. Select Board Amendment to Adopt, but to Special Acts, General Law Laws and Zoning.
That wasn't on the one I looked at today, unless I'm crazy. I swear, I looked at this this afternoon and I didn't.
It doesn't stick out to you since it hits a lot of different stuff maybe, but I, that's the first one I checked too.
Did it get rewritten or something? I swear, I looked at it.
The only thing we added today was article nine.
And I did notice that the font on the cover was also changed, which I appreciate it. That's, that's the change that I noticed.
Well, how long do they have to get 100 signatures in, Bill?
They'll have, they'll have them probably within two weeks, you know, so, yeah, in two to three weeks. Well, if they can't get the, the signatures, I think the, the board can make a determination. If they can't get it by a certain timeframe, you're not comfortable, you can take it off. You have that, you have that option. But it's up to them to get the signatures and I made it clear to them that they need to get the signatures sooner rather than later.
Cool.
Yeah. So with that discussion, I think we're probably ready for a motion to close the warrant.
Okay. Motion to close the December 5th, 2022 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. So now we're on to Assistant Town Manager's update and, um, Mike made an announcement this week that's with mixed emotions. So I asked him to talk a little bit about that announcement and to talk about what that means. You know, you probably had a lot of the same questions. What does that mean? You know, what does, um, what do deeds look like, transition plans? Um, and then, you know, just some other thoughts about, you know, where we are getting a new town manager now, you know, kind of what we do with the position between now and then, given, given where we're at.
Sure. So I, I did give my notice that I've accepted the position of Town Administrator in the town of Boxborough. Uh, my last day here will be November 4th, uh, because I'll be starting the new position on November 7th. Uh, so I did give seven weeks' notice because I wanted, while things are, are pretty well in order, um, as far as contracts and pay plans and, and unions and, and all that, those kinda things. And we're, we are in good shape as far as, um, you know, we don't have any litigation going on, we don't have any pending grievances. So this is actually, um, you know, one of the calmest times we've seen, you know, from, from town meeting to now.
Don't judge it. Don't judge it.
But, but given that, there are always things going on. I mean, there's always, you know, the little fires to put out, both on the operations side and on the human resources side. Um, so, um, so I've been getting my things in order as I've been, you know, looking for, you know, where I would land. And, um, one of the, you know, recent discussions we had was, you know, what, what, what we do to, to carry on some of the, the things. And I, and, um, you know, my recommendation, um, and I think Bill and, and Leah are in agreement from talking Thursday at our agenda prep meeting, um, was that we do advertise the, the position right away, get someone in. Um, because there's a lot, even at a time right now when things are somewhat calm, there's always things coming in. There's, there's that next dispute or that next contract interpretation. Or, or just getting together a weekly meeting with the department heads and the ops team and running those meetings. So I think that probably the discussion of, of, you know, what the, you know, as far as my position being both Assistant Town Manager and, and Human Resources Director, that may be a discussion for the, for the future with your new manager. But I think it's important to at least make sure you've got somebody coming in to carry on some of these duties. So, so we have, yes?
So I'm sorry, are we talking about an interim human resources person? Or are we talking hiring a full-time person going forward?
I think that's really a discussion for the board, but I think the important thing is that you do hire someone. Um, and I would say, you know, advertise that as soon as possible. Whether the board decides to do that on an interim basis, or you decide you wanna go ahead and hire a, uh, an HR director um, and to carry into the new administration, that's, that's really should be a policy discussion with the board. But I think it's important that you hire someone, um, you know, of, of whatever, you know, configuration that is, so that things don't fall. Because, you know, when you think about Bill's retiring in January, um, and then, you know, if your next manager needs 60 days' notice to get here, you know, that could put you into the spring. Um, I don't think it would be wise to, to leave my position empty from now until, until that point. But, but this is probably, and I think we talked about putting it at this point in the agenda this evening, so that you all can engage in a discussion about what that looks like. And I can certainly give you, um, you know, some recommendations just from having sat in the position. Uh, Bill can probably give you some perspective, uh, from having me work with him and what it looks like. And then I think you all, you know, having worked with us, would, I think we could have a fruitful discussion and maybe have some takeaways from that. I don't mean to be evasive with my answer, but I think it's really a, you know, partly a policy discussion that impacts both human resources and, uh, operations of the town.
Yeah, and, you know, that's why I wanted to talk with you guys about it, because I think, I think we would all agree we don't wanna hire another HR slash Town Manager. Like, that's not what we're looking to do. But we've got this hole we've gotta plug and, you know, now until March is a long time. And I wanna set up the new Town Manager for success. Like, imagine you come into that post and that's been empty and there's all kinda stuff and, you know, that piece of the shop hasn't been running. So, um, you know, at first I thought, do we wait on, do we wait on HR? Do we wait to see what happens if this is Town Manager? And after kinda thinking about it and talking and going back and forth, it seems to me like the most sense is to hire someone to be an HR Director for the town. I think that's a really important position. I think we have a lot of risk if we don't have that position properly staffed to stay ahead of the stuff, so that we don't have any issues. And then I think once we have a new Town Manager, we look at what happens, you know, maybe it's not an Assistant Town Manager, but who's second in command? Like, if the new Town Manager's not here, who can execute a document in Town Hall? So, um, I don't, there's not gonna be, I'd say my direction is to the, you know, whoever's hired. It's not like there's gonna be another head for Assistant Town Manager, like someone added to head count. My thought would be with someone probably in a role that exists that's second in command. But that's kind of to come down the road and for the new Town Manager to figure out what makes sense there and what that looks like. So my recommendation would probably, you know, with, with the discussion, because I wanna hear what everyone else has to say because we, we think of things different.
So I just wanna, I just wanna say that, um, for the sake of saying it, because it's not gonna be my job anyways, um, to, to determine, but I'm just gonna make, I'm gonna show you some, tell you some observations. I think having a full-time HR position is a good decision. I'm supportive of that. But I think you're making a very significant mistake by not having an Assistant Town Manager. The reason I say that is because that person does operations. That person's in charge of day-to-day operations on a regular basis. All the department heads report to that person. All the person, they come in, something goes wrong in their operations, they have to deal with that. The HR Director's not gonna deal with that. So you have all the things that come in the office on a regular, daily basis. And Mike can attest to that. I can attest that because I've done, I've been an assistant myself and I've been an HR Director myself. You deal with just HR Director issues, which you should deal with these days because they're very complex, very complex. And Mike probably will tell you that most of his time gets spent on HR issues. But the other side of that is that don't, you cannot forget the fact that the, the Assistant, Assistant Town Manager has a very important role in the organization. And we've evolved to the point where that should be looked at by the next, next administration. Because I'm telling you that that way we've evolved is, we've come to a point where a big enough organization, we should be having that position kept in the organization somewhere.
I guess I'm not, I'm not shutting the door on that. I'm just saying, we've gotta talk about it and figure out what that looks like.
Yeah, and I, I think adding it to another person's role that you currently have, a director, you, person, a couple of directors, who, there are some very capable people in this organization that could do that, but it's a lot to add to that, that plate. Because that's, those folks are already dealing with some very complex issues as it is. So I just think it's important that you think about that and that the next person thinks about that as well because they're gonna find out themselves. If they're not dealing, if they're, they're gonna be dealing with operational issues on the, the, the strategic stuff, the large-scale issue, the relationship issues, I'm not gonna be able to get done to, uh, get, get worked on, which is a very important role, particularly in this town.
Well, isn't, and if we didn't have an Assistant Town Manager, technically, isn't number two, I don't, I don't mean on a daily basis, Bob Cutler, the clerk, I mean, to step in?
No.
I think he was the interim.
He was the interim.
Oh, so he was just named interim.
He was only named interim.
No, because it was him or because of his position?
No, not because of his position.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was because he was clerk. I had, had no idea, um, why, why it was him.
So I was here during that time and, and he was, he was named by the Town Manager at the time.
Okay.
As the person to hold down the, you know, the fort, so to speak, for some period of time. And it, you know, the, the last Town Manager could have, um, you know, named someone else to that as, as well.
Yeah, so it had nothing to do with the clerk's position?
No.
I just don't wanna mislead anyone that I don't think we're gonna have, like, all right, now we're gonna hire an Assistant Town Manager. It's gonna be a whole new body and they're gonna do a whole new job.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I don't know, I don't, me personally, I don't see that happening. Um, but.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta ask Bill as, you know, our reigning Town Manager, you know, with this happening, would you, coming into a new town, want to hire your own Human Resources Director? Or, I mean, is that gonna change the, our dynamic a little bit when we're interviewing over the next three or four months?
And that's where I was initially, Doc. Like, I thought like that makes sense. And then as we talked about it, like, leaving that position open?
No, but I mean, maybe, there's gotta be people out there that'll fill the, the gap. Maybe someone who's retired that'll come in.
Well, I, I will tell you that there are people that will fill it on a very, very minimal basis, you know, and, and I know people that will do it tomorrow. The challenge though is that those people are very, very busy right now. And as a result, they're gonna be able to give very limited time to, to a situation where, you know, HR is evolved. HR is a completely different job than it was 20 years ago. It's now, it's a very complex job, requires, there are so many new regulations, no, so, so many new requirements. You have to manage multiple contracts, labor relations, all those things that go with that. It's not an easy thing to do on a daily basis. So having that person in that role on a daily basis is far better. And it will probably be better for the next manager to hit the ground running, knowing that they have somebody in place.
You answered my question.
So I think, I, I, normal, under normal circumstances, I would say yes, and even I was in that, in that camp, what for the new manager to make their own decision. But we'll find somebody good. I mean, I, with enough, we've picked enough good people over the years that we'll find somebody good. But I think the, the challenge is that I just don't want you to lose sight of that. And, and Leah, I appreciate you saying that, you know, because I'm not saying that this has, has to happen tomorrow, but you really can't lose sight. That's gonna be a challenge. I'm telling you that for the, for the, to not have a second number two person in that office is gonna be tough.
I was, uh, just thinking about the possibility of, uh, you know, going to Bernie and asking him if there's somebody that's more like a generalist, that has really good skills, get, that could, you know, you know, take on some of the HR role, some of the ATM role. But it would be, it would be an interim. It would be somebody with that skill set and contracted for a period of time until the, uh, the new Town Manager is, uh.
If you can get somebody to come in on a regular basis, I would say that's probably not a bad option. But I don't know that, there are many people that will do that right now.
And do we want an interim Town Manager and an interim Assistant Town Manager? I don't, I don't, that doesn't, I don't know.
I wasn't suggesting that. I was just suggesting somebody has a skill set. You know, that, that could come in and, you know, I, I think, you know, close the gap on those, those responsibilities and functions to. Bill will still be here.
But he'll be acting in an interim capacity, I guess, is what I was kinda saying from January until, until, you know, let's say March. So in reality, you could have two interim. So in reality, you could have two interim people, you know, overlapping for a couple of months, just as someone comes in and is hired and all that.
Yeah, we've talked about it, we've talked about it extensively, Dennis, and I, you know, and even some of the conversations just happened as early as earlier today. And so, you know, Leah and I have talked about this, and the conversation about the assisting really, really struck me today when I listened to what people, what the department heads were telling me, as well as what Mike was telling me. He said, you know, a lot of stuff isn't just HR, it's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on with it. But having said that, there is, and I, we had an HR director here when I first got here, and there was no assistant. I combined the two as a cost-saving measure. And it worked, but it was, it was a lot to put on the people who had those jobs.
And, you know, looking at it now after, like, there is a, like, a conflict of interest having HR be the second in, you know, just, I think, I think it just, just like you wouldn't want the finance director probably to be the assistant town manager, because again, those checks and balances, you know, looking at what makes sense.
You mentioned that, you've mentioned that a couple of times over.
But if you look at other organizations, it is set up that way. Where you have a deputy town administrator, in Needham, for instance, they have two deputies. Deputy town administrator for just operations, and then one's deputy town administrator for finance, and that's the finance director.
Yeah.
And you also have an HR director on top of that. So that's, that's the, there are different structures like that. But I think that you just have to know that it can't be dismissed out of hand, that that's an important role, because it is.
No, I don't think anyone's dismissing it, I just, I don't want to say what it's going to look like, because I think it's the new town manager's
I agree.
...role and position to shape what that looks like and sell it to us. And I mean, in reality, the HR director does, you know, it's not a role that we hire, it's a role that, under our charter, is the town manager. But, you know, I think our feedback at this point is important, given all the discussions we've had over the...
And we'll find somebody good. I am confident about that part of it, provided that there is somebody out there right now, but I'm sure there is. And, because a lot of people want to come here. It's a no-good organization, but part of it.
I'll offer you one bit of perspective, at least from my own, and that is, for the question that you posed to Bill, how would you feel coming in? I'm going into a situation where I'm going to be taking over from an interim town administrator, and there is an assistant town administrator there, who is the succession, and who's, that's their role, but they're also doing human resources. That gives me more comfort than if I was going into where either that position was gapped, or it was an interim, you know, going in to replace two interims. I think there's some succession and some consistency that I'm moving into, and I'm already having some conversation with that person, and I think that's helpful in my transition.
Yeah, so getting the HR person up and running, so they're, you know, six months in by the time Bill kind of cuts the cord.
Yeah, they know the organization by the time your new town manager arrives. I think that would be helpful to them.
So, kind of, does it, it sounds like we want to give Bill the direction probably to move forward with, with filling that gap, you know, under the premise that it's an HR director, not an HR director slash town manager. There's more to come on the assistant town manager, you know, down the road, once the new person can shape that.
You're probably, for that period, you're probably talking about, you know, I'm six weeks away from leaving now, we can post this thing in the next two days, this position, but typically it's going to take eight weeks minimum to get somebody. And, and we know this is a position that's, can be tricky to fill, so, but you're talking about eight or 10 weeks, so you might have, you might have a month where the, you know, where the seat's empty. But that's a lot better to look at than six.
Yeah, it's good timing probably now than before the holidays to get, move on it.
Right, right.
Yeah, definitely, if we're going to do it, we should do it now.
All right, so moving along to town managers update, Bill, you've got a couple items that we want to selectmen's update.
All right. I don't want to, I mean, I'm going to save a lot of my comments for when Mike does finally leave, but I just want to say congratulations to him publicly. I mean, I know that, you know, him and I have talked a lot about his departure, and I think he's prepared himself well for this, and I think he's in a good position. I think, I think Foxborough will benefit by his knowledge, and I think he'll, he'll do, he'll definitely be a loss to us. You know, I share the sentiment of the staff members and the department heads and all the folks that work with Mike on a day-to-day basis, that they are sorry to see him go, but they're also very, very glad for him professionally, that this is the right next step for you. So congratulations on that.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
So we just wanted to, there's a couple of things I wanted to update you on. First of all, I did do, I did have a couple announcements that, or things that we did. Let me just say, Katie had given me a couple of updates. You know, Katie does still work, by the way, behind the scenes, and she's probably there tonight looking in on us.
She is.
So we approved the Halloween parade to congregate on the Commons post-parade on October 29th. The Foxborough High School volleyball car wash at Town Hall for October 8th. That is subject, however, to approval by the water department, and that is a conditioned approval. And then finally, the Taylor School is going to do trunk-or-treat at the Schneider Lot, which, by the way, has just been expanded to about 140 spots now. So we're very grateful for Schneider working with us, and I'm not going to steal the chair's thunder on the visit that we had there, but it was very, very informative and very interesting visit that we had with them recently. Just a couple of things on roadwork that's going around town. PJ Keating is in town into the next week milling and paving several streets. We see, they will be doing the mill, they're milling Marra Elizabeth, the Marra and Elizabeth neighborhood. On Tuesday and Wednesday, they'll be milling Mechanic Street and the railroad tracks to Chestnut Street. Thursday, they'll be paving Marra Elizabeth and the Marra Elizabeth neighborhood. And on Friday, they will be paving Mill Street recreational parking lot in Glenwood Ave. Overnight on October 3rd and 4th, they'll be, on 4th, October 3rd and 4th, they'll be paving Mechanic Street. And on the West Street dam update, they're finishing the stumping removal and installation of erosion controls and construction fencing. There'll be grubbing stumps and roots after Conservation Commission agent approves the erosion controls, and mobilization for in-water work will begin shortly. There'll be a 24/7 closure, and that is tentatively scheduled to begin in two weeks, beginning October 10th for that road, for the West Street Road. Flushing is going to be starting this week in Zone 1. The remaining zones 2 through 5 will be flushed through November 7th. There is a map on the water page, on the water website, if you are not certain in what zone you're in. Flushing occurs between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, with signs in the area to inform individuals of the flushing. Updates on the current flushing program will be posted on the town and DPW social media pages as well.
I do have to say, when those zone maps come out, not being critical, but you can't tell what roads they are, like, I zoom in and I'm like, okay, am I in that zone? So as someone who's pretty familiar with the roads, I still have a little bit of trouble...
Maybe we should color-code them or something like that.
I still have a little trouble, like, I don't know if I'm in Zone 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and the map is really tiny.
Right.
So it might be helpful, like, put the names of the roads in the post or something.
Okay.
Because you know that there's going to be questions.
So I just, I just came back from Columbus, Ohio, for the International City Managers Meeting, where Foxborough was recognized nationwide as the, and was as a receiver of the CEMRIC Health and Safety Award. So it was, we did recognize, we were recognized as the region, but also as a town, because we are the host community for that facility. And so we were recognized in front of over 3,000, 3,400 managers from around the world at that meeting. So special congratulations to Rob Bedon and his group, and to all the member communities who participated and made this happen. It's worked out very, very well. We are in the throes of adding another community. The board voted yesterday to tentatively offer Norwood membership in the region, and so they'll be, and then it'll go out to, it'll be formalized by a vote of the member communities and their representatives. And then we're looking, we're talking about some other mergers as well, that that'll be interesting, that they're still not ready for primetime yet, but they're in the discussion phase right now.
Is there a date for that meeting? I know that's always really hard.
That is something that Rob is working on as we speak. So we have not announced an actual date for the meeting as we speak. All right.
Are all the other town managers on that board from the existing towns?
Yes.
So as you go out, our new town manager will...
Will become a member of that board, that's correct.
And we have to vote, remember, after the CEMRIC votes too, like, we'll have to execute it to add Norwood after, and it's always
That's correct, yeah.
Always tough to get all the boards, like, aligned to do the voting.
Yeah, but that can actually be done through a member, through a representative now, so you don't have to have all five, all members to be present, so you can have two members present.
So will we have to make...
Well, then, as soon as the notice comes out, then we will, the board will have to act on identifying a member to represent you, so that'll be a good thing. All right. Just general operations is, it's been extraordinarily busy for the whole month of September, just a lot of things going on. Everybody's back doing meetings and doing a lot of daytime meeting scheduling, things that couldn't be done during the summertime. But we are moving forward, as was noted earlier, that we are moving forward, trying to get the laundry building down, we're taking steps to get that taken care of. We're actually also doing some preliminary discussions on budget preparation and how we're going to prepare, looking at the calendar and how those things are all going to come together pretty soon. So we're already taking those steps to be in place for the next several months. Obviously, the transition phase is going to be important, but I think, quite honestly, we'll probably be very close to having most of the town meeting stuff ready for the new person to step into, once they take over as the new manager. So the new administration can then, then work with that, with that new role, with a pretty clean operation starting off. So that's the goal. I think that's it for me. I don't see anything else I have to report to you at this point. I did pick up some, some really good information about other electronic, and it was amazing to me how the ICMA meeting was all about electronics. Everything there was digital, everything was about, you know, removing paper from the meeting, from your meetings and looking at. I did get a chance to see, I went to the Diligent booth, where they talked about, about all the board docs and how that's been converged with Diligent and Community, and then all the new, new next-generation stuff that's coming out now. So I was able to get some demonstrations of that, so it was good to see that as well. And that's all I have to say.
So piggybacking on you talking about how there was everything happening, I think there was one week, and I think it was this week after school ended, week after school started, I think there was three breakfast invitations, all in the same week, from the Y, and Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce had multiple, and Bill and I actually ended up attending the Tri-Town Chamber Economic Development Breakfast. I followed their Facebook page, and I followed, and I said, hey, can I go to this? So we did meet the new site director for the new Schneider at that breakfast, and I said, hey, I've never, I've lived here my whole life, I've never been there, can I have a tour? So actually, last week, I went on a tour of that new Schneider Electric building across from the Y. They've now totally got everyone out of Naponton Street, and it was kind of cool and interesting to see all the stuff that they do in there. They did move a number of facilities from Rhode Island that came up, and then everything that came from Naponton Street, and then they have people that are sitting in cubicles as well. But they're actually producing and making things on like a factory floor out there. So just wanted to let you guys know that there is that new site director, Kevin, I can't think of his last name right now, but I'm sure that he'd be willing to, you know, if anyone else is interested, it was, it was kind of cool to see, you know, all the jobs that are kept in town, because they could have certainly probably sent those elsewhere, but they made a decision to keep a lot of that there. And it is a big hub in North America for Schneider Electric as well, so definitely a big investment in town there. Christine, I'll give you a minute to put up this community preparedness night, 9:28, 5:30 to 7:30. People have probably seen the flyer, but it's with Foxborough Fire and EMS, along with Human Services, Veterans, Health Department, and CEMRIC, about how to prepare, react, and find resources after a crisis. So that is at Public Safety Wednesday, the 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Also, the Lions have their family fall festival, I think on October 1st, that's before our next meeting, just a reminder that that one's coming up. And then the survey for the town manager search. So when I talked to Bernie and Sharon, they had a survey that they wanted to send out to the community, so that we can get feedback on what we're looking for in the next candidate. But I didn't want to have it go out without making sure you guys were aware of it, so is everyone aware of it before we let it rip? Yeah? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure everyone, everyone was aware and knew about it and had a chance to look at it. So I think that they'll work directly with Christina, who will get that out now to the community, so that we can gather and solicit feedback from the community about what's important to them and what they value in the next town manager. And then they'll compile all that neatly for us and roll that out to us to review the results. And then the cell phone policy, I just had this on here as a placeholder, because I didn't want to, you know, lose sight of it, but I don't think we're ready for it. I think Bill's still weighing in on the policy, and then it'll probably have to go back to the personnel board, or if there's, I don't know what you're saying.
There's a couple of amendments we need to make.
Okay, so Bill has a couple edits that he's going to make to that before it's ready for primetime, so nothing, nothing really to update on that one, just more of a placeholder under old business. Does anyone else have any other items?
Well, I want to thank Robert and Jonathan Kraft for inviting us pregame.
I meant to do something there, yes.
I almost did, but I thought you might do it during selectmen, so I didn't say it.
No, that's why I didn't have it here.
And so I wanted to thank you, it was a great, great day. The end result wasn't what we would hope. But a funny, quick story, speaking about our electronic world, so you three got to go to your seats, but me, Seth, and Bill went up into the put-in room, and we grabbed lunch, and Bill slapped down a $50 bill, and the woman looked at him like he had nine heads.
They don't take cash. They don't take cash.
Yeah, there's a machine over by Guest Services. It's actually right by that kiosk, on that near kiosk, that you can put money in, and it will give you a card to use up there.
It was a great day. It was great being on the sideline.
It was a beautiful day, yes. So it was a pregame ceremony they had against you.
Thank the craft.
And there's nothing like, you know, being in your hometown, looking around, seeing that crowd, the flyover going over, it, it's like emotional, it's really, it's really nice.
That was very cool.
And just as a side note, the Lions up in top, that's Saturday. October 1st is Saturday.
Yeah, it's Saturday, isn't that crazy? Yeah, it's really soon. I don't know what happened in September, but it's gone. All right, so with that, we have a handful of action items.
Okay, motion to approve the public event application for NPS LLC for the Magic of Light Events to be held December 2nd.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Is it, is it just December, we'll go into November at all? The motion looks kind of like it's not...
And it just dropped off there. I thought it was...
It says November 18th.
I thought it was the end of...
Yeah, so it's, it's November 18th to December 31st. So we'll amend that motion.
Mend it, yeah.
Yep, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a $649.35 donation from the Foxborough Quirbage League in memory of Charlie Sichu.